No, the other recording is going. I just forgot to start the blue jeans. My bad.
We are now have a roll call. We had the listener. All for the next meeting was made and now the approval of the minutes for June 14th. Does somebody make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Discussions, corrections. Missing. No. All the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O's. The ayes have it. And the motion passes. Public comments and concerns, none. Public hearing, none. All continuing business, none. New business. Environmental stewardship element. Jason, you're on deck.
Yeah, this is, we've been trying to figure out how to present this to you, so. This I don't think is going to be the last time you see this. Because we were struggling with how to bring this forward. We've also had some kind of issues with our consultant side. So what we thought we would do is take this opportunity to bring this forward. And oh, and I mean, we didn't do this in track changes.
I didn't post it in track changes.
Did the packet they have have it in track changes?
Was I supposed to give it?
Yeah. It's my fault. I was on location.
Come on you, Jason.
It's all my fault. So what we're hoping to do tonight is a little less formal, and we just want to have a conversation with the planning commission about how they want us to present these changes. I was hoping this was in track changes. That is totally my fault.
I can pull it up in track changes.
If you let's pull it up and we can just share screening and we'll do it that way. And so this is totally on me. I apologize. I gave, I did not give good direction. So this is totally on me. So it happens. Done. So we really want to talk about how you wanted to see the changes coming forth. Would it make better sense to have it in a table? And then just have a clean chapter to review? Or would it make sense to do it in track changes? Track changes can sometimes, you want me to log on?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'll just log on. Five minute recess talking. We'll get this fixed. I apologize. This is what happens when we go on too long of a timeout.
It's like school starting up again.
While we're on a five minute recess. October 5th, Thursday, that's why I had to pause on the date there. October 5th is the Bonnie Lake High School homecoming parade and community pep rally. We would love to have everybody join us.
I don't think I can go to that.
Is it at the Panther Stadium?
Guys, we got district to approve 100% of our own football games at our own high school this year.
Yay, now I can just walk across the street instead of having to go to summer.
Huge, 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 huge.
This year I can root for the Bonnie Lake Panthers every game.
Okay.
Next year I go down. Because you're moving up, what I hear.
Yes, that's, that's, but we shouldn't be in the same league as Sumner still, so.
You worry about Summer.
Okay, okay.
If Bellarmine, then I'm worried.
Oh dang you. Well, you can, you can vote or you can root for Bonnie Lake when Bellarmine's not playing it.
My son's a defensive end for Bellarmine. My son played for four years. So I'm kind of like, oh, that one's tough.
That would be a tough one. And then the sixth Friday is our homecoming football game at Bonnie Lake High School. We've never gotten to play a homecoming game at our own high school before. We are super stoked. We have food trucks coming for both nights. We actually have food trucks coming for September 22nd as well.
I am very happy to find it. I, I love that idea. 100%.
It, it has been the coolest, most awesome yes from the district I think we've ever gotten.
Yeah, I mean, going to Bellarmine, going to Memorial Stadium. You guys have a better stadium than we do.
Really?
We don't have a better stadium, so.
Oh.
Visitor order. When's writing, we're all singing the rain again.
The 19th year or 20th year?
This is our 19th year as a high school. 19 years as a high school and it took that many years for us to get to play at home.
So weird. Have a great stadium. I don't want more stadium.
The parade starts at over 45 PM.
Is it going through my neighborhood again?
No. It's going to be on 104th.
Nice.
We got, I'm finally seeing the details with the acting chief on that. And Grant, you'll get an email with our final results from our meeting yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Get them rolling.
We're super excited.
That's awesome. Are you going to do a booth at the beautiful Bonnie Lake?
We'll have, yeah, we'll have a parent out there that will, I'm going to have the little invites to the community that I'm just going to print those out and then she just hand those out to everybody. Like, hey, guys, come on in.
I apologize, I don't know what I'm doing.
No.
That's okay.
I want to say this for the record. That was not Kennedy's mistake. That was Jason's.
Oh, also do you want?
100%.
We all got to learn somewhere, right?
No, possibly. I agree. That was Jason's mistake of 100%.
Well, fix the problem, not the blame.
I'm trying to fix me. It's been a long process.
Oh, Carrie, did you and Don figure out the QR codes?
Just getting the EIN from
Cool.
It's actually probably better like.
Okay, yes, we've got every, but she is getting that finished initially. Send those to me and I can print those.
Okay, yeah, just send them to me and Tom and we'll get it. I can get it on the website. Okay, cool. I mentioned text yesterday too. I'm sorry.
Look at all this stuff outside of planning commission. We're doing waiting. See, Jason? It's kind of nice. Like with this, relax for a moment.
All right, we're ready now. So what you have in your packet is the complete adopted version with all the track changes taken out. So I guess the question to the planning commission is, would you prefer to see it like that and then we just give you? Or do you want to see it kind of in the track changes, not with the formatting changes, but like the narrative changes? Or do you want to see it both in a table and track changes? Because there are some changes to the narrative, but not as much. A lot of the changes really are going to be. Let me scroll down. You can see there's not a lot of change. Everything that's in, you know, not in regular text is, has been there forever. A lot of the changes really are in the policy side. So these are all new policies. I mean, so would you rather see a table with the old policy and the new policy? And if it's a new policy, we just have nothing or in track changes? We're just trying to figure out as we bring this forward. What's the best way? And we can also take any comments you have specifically on this element, but we'll be bringing this back for a more robust, I think, in-depth conversation once we know exactly how would be the best way for the planning commission to understand what changes we're making and why.
I like this way. On directly on the page. I like that. It's easy to know exactly where it goes and what we're, where you've changed things and what you're doing.
It is, yeah. The underlined is the new stuff and the crossed out is the stuff you're taking out. And that's the way you've always done it, right? Yeah, it's just with comp plans, it gets hard because some of these things were changing because there's a state law change. And when you do it like this, it's hard to get the rationale behind the change. You just see the change. Does that make sense?
So if we had it in the column form, we would have like, this is why this changed and here's the new.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I could see the.
See, that's what I'm saying. It's, and it's hard. We could do both, but then you get packets that are like super thick.
Both is, I think, not necessary.
I mean, we could give you the complete, like, untracked change version so you could see how it lays out in the document. And then you could see in the table where that strikeout underline exists. And so you would have it all together on that way.
What's easier for you?
They're both easy. I mean, that's the same work for us.
I have easier understanding in this format.
That format. This format.
Yeah, good either way.
Maybe we could do some sort of, maybe there's a way we can do commenting in this format. It does the same thing.
Well, I was gonna say, like, it seems like there's comments off to the side.
Yeah, these were kind of more drafting comments, but we can add comments like, this is why this.
Or footnotes or something like that on the draft?
I tried, well, we do footnotes already in the documents. I'd rather do comments on the side. And I believe you can PDF to the comments go on the printed version. The challenge with doing that, though, the text of the document gets smaller.
Yeah, because everything has to be.
Because everything still is an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper.
Well, the good thing is, is you send it out to us digitally so we can zoom it in if needed to.
Okay, so what we will do, do it strikeout underline. I'm not going to show formatting changes. Is that okay? Like if we change the font text or the font color, because in my mind, those aren't substantive changes. Those are stylistic changes. And if you have a real problem with the style, talk to me offline. We've got too much invested in our style guide right now to change it. Because I think you guys have finished the style guide, correct, Kennedy? Yeah, so you know, the other option we could do is in, is in the packet. If we do do a table for our own tracking purposes, give you a link to it. And that way you could link to that separately if you're getting it electronic.
That sounds good.
I'm just trying to keep, is there any, did you guys read through it? Do you have any questions, concerns about any, we're here, so let's talk about it. But I have to admit, something that happened that I was not expecting was our prime consultant that was doing all this work, their entire staff like bounced. You're right. And so we're in crisis mode.
That's crazy.
Yeah, trying to figure out how we're going to put all this back together. So we didn't want to cancel this meeting. And we had like a half finished document. So I was like, Kennedy, just get it out to the planning commission. We'll take this time as an opportunity to talk to people and then we will kind of regroup and restrategize and reload and figure out how to get it done. So, but we didn't want to cancel. So please, if you have any comments, concerns with what's in the document, we can go to those pages and talk about them. And I can walk you through the track changes as we go. So I'll just walk through it and that way you can stop me at any point. So this first one, really, there has been a lot of changes in the state law requiring the cities to coordinate with tribes. So these policies are just kind of studying that policy framework that we're going to continue to coordinate with tribes and other local jurisdictions as we protect and mitigate for critical areas and also from the impacts of climate change. I know there was some debate last time we had our comp plan update about the word climate change. It has to be there. I mean, that's just part of the new state framework. Going forward, after we get through this element, starting around 2025, we actually have to adopt a climate change element. That will be additional work that we start doing in 2025 through 2029. So I know that those words are sometimes politically charged and there's people all over the political spectrum. This is one of those times I'm just asking that unfortunately, there's some things that we have to have in there to get through the certification process and it's I don't know. I'll leave it up to the planning commission, but that's my recommend. So let's scroll down. So I'm just going to go to kind of where we made changes. And it's really just in the policy. We have a lot of these policies shows. I think this is a retype, but these are the policies related to critical for geological hazard areas. And how we're going to have policies around making sure people don't build in areas that are geologically unstable or landslide hazard areas. Concerns, questions. You don't have to answer everything that we're going to come back with a souped up version of this. And I want to say some of these policies, even though they're shown in track changes, were there before. That whole, that whole section is not new. Just based on my memory. Trying to scroll through this. So here's a good one. So you can see here, we've kind of mitig, we've changed some of the language for groundwater. So, you know, the goal is to protect the quality and supply of our groundwater and provide safe, reliable drinking water. We've added monitor and mitigate related to impacts. And we've added, in addition to working with the Pierce County, Pierce Community, Pierce County and Washington State Department of Ecology, we've added tribes and other relevant liable parties or engaged parties. Using best available science, kind of a grammar change, and then another, you know, use best available science to protect and enhance groundwater quality. And also, this is actually a gap that we identified in our analysis. We need to have a policy that basically says we're going to regularly require regular water quality monitoring improvement projects to ensure that safe drinkable water for all residents regardless of race, social or economic status, accounting for potential impacts of climate change on water quality. So, you know, some climate change policies because climate change is affecting our supply of groundwater. It'd be, it's altering it, right? The rains are coming much harder and intensive in a shorter period of time. You're not getting that recharge all year and you're also not getting the same kind of snow water melt that you would have. So is, there is this kind of impact on groundwater supply as the climate changes. Not saying it's warming, I'm not saying it's cooling, just as it, as it fluctuates. We are seeing more drought. I mean, it hasn't rained hardly at all this summer, right? And then it rained really late into June, but it's just shifting around when we're getting those, those things. And a lot of the policies regarding race, socioeconomic status comes out of some of the larger conversations about and a lot of this is sometimes they're coming from larger sources, but around the lead pipes and stuff in drinking water. Not as much of an issue here in the city, but still kind of part of the regional policy framework that we're part of that, you know, there are areas in Tacoma that are not as well off, that have not as good water pipes because of when they were built. I don't think we have any lead pipes here in the city of Bonnie Lake. I think we all, we have all ducted all iron. So, but once again, this is part of our regional policy framework. I can answer any questions.
Actually really have liked learning the soil types.
Oh, yeah.
And I think it's really cool to know where these are and why certain areas are designated. I those are really neat things for other people in the community to learn too, because that helps them understand why areas are designated what.
Yeah, it's good to see the maps because people sometimes think we just pull this out of thin air, but there is actually a lot of science and thought behind it. And this map right here you're looking at is actually our susceptibility map. And it's how fast ground, how fast contamination when it enters the ground will basically enter one of our wells. Anything that's in the very high susceptibility zone means on average, it's about a one-year travel time from that point to the water source well. And the reason it's a straight line on Myers, it was just past Myers is that's because that's where our well source is. And then it drops off below that. So contamination down there doesn't affect where we're pulling our groundwater supply because we're pulling it from a higher level. Orange is five years and then yellow is ten.
How do they determine the blast zones and Lahars?
That was done on some modeling that, that US Geological Service did years ago. So Lahars, any Lahar now, we're not really expecting impacts here in the city. There's some properties right, you'll see on that, you saw on that mapping right on the lower edge that are kind of down on the Puyallup Valley. At the bottom of Eli Hill, that may have some impact from a large Lahar. We don't expect Lahars to flow through here. We did have one and a long time ago. The electron mud flow through came through Bonnie Lake and that's what created Kelly Lake Farms. If you look at that map, you can see kind of this weird stretch of different color that's Kelly Lake Farms and down through Fennel Creek Corridor. That was all done through the electron mud flow hundreds of thousands of years. And that's why that area has lots of wetlands and streams because you have a very different soil type in that area because of that geological bit. The blast zones are what we can find. It's not the greatest map. It was digitized from an old study. I think there's some newer, new updated studies. And we will try to update the map, but that's based on if there was a north side or, sorry, west side eruption. You know, if it blows out on the east side, it's going to be kind of a different blast zone, but that's assuming a west side eruption. So you see there's parts of the city and like, if you look back, I'm going to go back up to that map. Is it? Yeah, the case M Lahar is like the big super Lahar. And it's based on geological mapping. As you see, that's why we've tried to move our residential development for outside the blast zone from the city. Most of the residential development is outside of that. Like East Town is all industrial. And so there's not as many residents in the area. We have residents in those areas and we're slowly trying to change the zonings to kind of move residential densities kind of out of those blast zone area. And that's where we expect actual falling like stuff, not ash. Ash will be everywhere, but like rock and so you may think about falling ears.
Pretty much. 2012.
So really, you know, on the surface water ones, there wasn't really a lot of change in policy. We've changed the goal to also enhance the quality of our surface waters and natural habitats from non-point pollution. A lot of the policies are the same. We've added best available science. And then also to work with the tribes. You know, it's important to note that, you know, I know there's lots of debates around like fish and streams and you know, the tribes are sovereign governments, nations, as they say, sovereign nations. And that we need to, you know, we need to work with them kind of at a governmental to governmental level. It's different than working with, you know, like citizens. We're working with an actual government and a nation. So it's government to government relationship. So that kind of concept is being worked and developed into a lot of these proper plans as required by some changes in the state, all that were passed last legislative cycle.
The question about the flooding issues.
Yes.
Back when I, long, back in Stone Age, when I was on the city council, we had that weather event where basically the valley was flooded. And a lot of the areas up here was flooded. And it was, so far seemed to have been like a once, you know, 75 year event. But has there been anything done within the city where those areas, the communities that were flooded out have been identified and they've been identified to the residents? You know, just to let them know that, I mean, there's not much the city can do, but the community can get together and try and mitigate it.
Well, a lot, it's yes and no. A lot of the areas that were flooded are also other critical areas. So there's not much you can do except prevent development within those floodplains. We have taken steps to reduce the number of people that could be impacted. If you remember last year, we did that large swath of down zoning of properties to the RC5. And those corresponded to areas that are either in the 100 or 500 year floodplain. One of them was the pothole that last time it had a major flooding event was in 2017 or 2016? Maybe 2015? Where the pothole is about 60, about probably 20 feet deep and was completely flooded and it was over the roadway. It's up kind of behind Lakeside, Lakeside Junior, Junior High. So that area, parts of those areas that were in that 500 or 100 year floodplain were down zoned to RC5 to reduce development in those areas. It's kind of a double edged sword. You know, property owners are not happy when we reduced amount of development that could occur on a property, but we also don't want development to occur in areas where we know there's going to be a lot of flooding and putting more homeowners there.
That area specifically was the one I had in mind because we got called out there to go up there and take a look at it.
That Lakeside area?
Yeah.
That's the one that's the most notorious. It's part of the old kettle, kettle and cane system, which is basically a divot from when the glaciers receded. And so all, a lot of storm water flows into that area naturally and there's no natural outlet. So if you get a big like snow and rain event where you have it, snow, 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 and then it warms up real quick and then it rains on top of the snow, it just overwhelms that, that pond's ability to infiltrate or that area to infiltrate. Also, over time, those areas begin to infiltrate less and less and less. Right? Because there's more organics in the soil and so likely there's going to be more and more standing water. So that's why those areas were kind of down zoned. So there's one unit for every five acres. So you're not going to see a lot of development occur in that area. Because we don't want to build a lot of homes that could then get flooded. You know, we're trying to do this in a responsible way.
I know they'd be pretty receptive to any assistance we give. What probably would, the ones that were actually there at the time, that would be the most receptive.
And not a lot of change to the habitat ones, the big, like I said, getting the big policies are, you know, using the best available science and also coordinating with tribes regarding drama's fish habitat. We have to put that in because we do have salmon habitat in the city, very small area. And luckily it's all owned by the city. It's the area from Victor Falls and downstream of Victor Falls, which is all owned by the city of Bonnie Lake. So we still want to protect those areas and conserve them, but we don't other, and that's a natural fish barrier. So it's not a fish barrier we have to address to allow salmon to come up because it's a naturally occurring waterfall. So it's considered the headwaters for that habitat. The only reason I don't like it on this way because you have to scroll through all the pages. This is some more stuff on agricultural lands, kind of preserving agricultural lands. Supporting community gardens. And, you know, like I said, you're going to receive that reoccurring theme about, you know, identifying the way to mitigate the impacts of climate change on whatever that system is, agricultural systems, land conditions and work. Air quality. There's a significant amount of new text there. Why, I don't understand why, because I think reading through this, this is a lot of the text that I added. So that might be the formatting change that we're seeing there. I don't know. There's a lot of these, all these shows, all new policy and I know some of these are existing. So is there any specific policy that you as a commission are concerned about, any specific change or anything that you want us to add or look into in further evaluating? When we come back with it next time, we'll have it the way you want to see it. So I think it'll be cleaner and crisper. For my own sanity, I might still do the table because it's just quicker for me to go through at that point. But is there any, any concerns, issues? This is just a conversation, so.
No, I think just, you know, to see it with all of the changes and what you guys have updated and changed will help. Just, it's like what I'm seeing here, this is all I know.
Right.
Whatever you've got that actually changed would help me to be able to go.
And it's hard because I think what happened is as we were reformatting and moving And it's hard because I think what happened is as they were, as we were reformatting and moving things around. It shows as a track, as a change, as new text. But it's not new text. It's just because the text is in a different location, the computer records references as new text. So we'll have to play with that to, so we can really drill in on what's the, what's the, what's the exact change? It may be we move it and we accept all parts of it, except one little part. So I will work with my staff and we'll figure out how the best display that because it's that's why we're doing it now versus at the end and, and you guys are frustrated like this doesn't make any sense.
Honestly, I mean, just being able to see this is
Okay.
I like seeing and knowing like what's been the plan in place all these years and know all Bonnie Lake's been moving forward and to see like, you know, from the nineteen sixties to the eighties.
Oh, the, the
You know, like each piece of that puzzle.
Yeah, like the little, uh, where, where's what, like this? Kind of in the corner here. Yeah, this is something we put in, in the last comprehensive plan. That, that little call, that little insert box, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, we did that because there's a lot of fear sometimes that the things that we're talking about are new. And not really. I mean, in some way or fashion, we've been talking about these topics since nineteen sixty-four. So this quote right here, the emission of noise, smoke, dust and obnoxious matter are to be limited, controlled and specific standards. That's from the plan for Bonnie Lake, Washington from nineteen sixty-four. If I can find it, that one's not as good. Let's see. Yeah. So a lot, and I, that's why I put it in there because a lot of times, a lot of the things that we're talking about, there's this. And it's because it's a change, right? It's, it's new language and we're talking about this new policy, but you know, it's not things that we've changed significantly, right? Like we, we're talking about urban forestry and there's an uproar about sometimes that we're trying to protect trees and we're trying to protect the tree canopy. That's been the goal for the city since nineteen eighty-five. Right? Like preserve Bonnie Lake's character by maintaining significant tree, tree lines and wooded lots to the maximum sensible possible through the regulation of clearing prior to development. Right? Like we have, we have been, this ideal for serving and protecting our tree canopy is not a new idea. The policies, the tools that we use to do it are new and change, but the concept behind it is what nineteen eighty-five is four, almost forty years old. And so, um, I put those in there so people can see that the while like the policy may change and the science may change and the way we describe it has changed. The arching concept has not changed in forty or fifty years. You know, um, so that's, well, that's what we put in there. I'm glad, I'm glad you liked that and saw that. I mean, it was something that we did last time and we really I thought it was a way just to kind of like link these to older documents. Going back in time. So the other question I have for the planning commission is part of the, and this, and this is part of the conversation I wanted to have tonight. In order to get this done, Grant, we're probably going to have to go back to two meetings. I'm on it.
Do you have the staff?
That's what we're working on right now to try to figure out how we're going to pull all this off. My consultant bailed on me while I was on vacation. So I've, I'm in this two days now. Of retooling our entire strategy. So, which means we're going to probably slow on the front end and do a lot of work on the backend, which means probably two meetings. Because what we want to do and Kennedy and Mehdi did a great job of mapping this outlaw was gone. Is we want to have all the draft elements done by the June of next year. And the reason we want to do that is we want to take these, this draft, these draft documents out during concerts in the park. Not here's the document, but like here are the plans for the city. Here's what we're having to do by the state law. Here is, and have that conversation with the public at Toons for Tab. And then get done with that in early, in August and spend September, October, November finalizing the document. Um, and so to do that, there's going to be a, a big push. I've got to figure out how we're going to do that. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
One of you thinking of going to two meetings a month.
January for sure. Except November, December, we know we won't do it too in December because of the holidays unless we do it back to back. But definitely in January, I might even request like if we have a fifth Tuesday that we pick that up. We'll come back to you with a full plan. Um, I'm just saying, if you could keep an eye on your Wednesdays next year and keep them as open as possible, it would be greatly appreciated. You know, we do have a deadline of December of twenty twenty-four. And we're, we were already behind the gun because of some things that happened at the state level. Now we're behind the gun even further. Mehdi and Kennedy are great. I think we can get ourselves back on the horse and get it going again. Um, but I just wanted to say, if you could keep those Wednesdays open. It would be greatly appreciative. And I know we might even, in that timeframe, we also may have, be trying to find new council members. We'll know that in November. So we've, I, we've got some challenges that we may have to kind of, uh, overcome as we go forward.
Again, new council members.
I mean, new planning commissioners. Sorry. Was, I know, I'm just saying that's a, I'm, we're, I'm just trying to do a risk assessment of all the risk we have running up to this getting complete. Um, we may have to be training two new planning commissioners in, in, in the middle of all that too as well. So, um, that's just where we are. And I wanted to give you kind of an honest assessment. Grant, we've got through it before.
I know.
We'll make it through it again. But if that's, if that's okay, if that's okay, the planning commission as we're currently constituted, we'll try to do week on, week off. Um, which is what we used to do. Um, I think only Brad and Grant were here when we did two meetings a month. I think everybody else has gotten used to the one meeting in the month because we got really good at planning our stuff. Now we're a little bit behind the eight ball, uh, and we may have to go back to that, but we used to meet twice a month. To, to, because we were behind the eight ball and some other stuff and I got us all caught up and now we're back behind the eight ball. So.
Well, back then we were reacting.
Yes. We're still not in the reacting stage. We're still kind of in the proactive stage.
We're planning ahead.
Yeah.
Here, take care of this.
So what, and what we'll probably do is we'll bring a topic for the first meeting month. And because it's too fast to swing around the comments for the next meeting, what we'll probably do is the first meeting be one topic, the second meeting be another topic. The, and then that first meeting of the mother month will be the same thing that we talked about the first month. So we'll probably swing it month to month. Just trying to get a packet turned around in a, in a week. Unless we have to, it's not the greatest idea. So we'll probably be bouncing between topics, um, over the course of that period.
We can do it.
I have complete faith in this planning commission. So anything else we should take back or I don't want to keep you guys too late. I know it's
It looks good.
And if anytime you get questions from the public. Cause I will tell you notoriously, anytime you do a comp plan. The rumor mill starts and there's going to be rumors flying all over the place because people will hear snippets of things. Please email me. Please contact me so that we can get ahead of them. As I will tell you right now, one of the things that we have to do in an EIS is have alternatives to analyze. And some of those alternatives, we know we aren't going to pick. But we still have to have by law, different alternatives to analyze. So you might see in the EIS, an alternative that we're analyzing, which is all the R one becomes identity. Or up, increase the density R one. Doesn't mean we're going to go that way, but I have to have
Multiple options.
Multiple options that go from the high to the low end before we pick the preferred solution. I'm saying it now. So when you start hearing the rumor that we're up zoning all the property or we're studying it. Yes, I'm completing an environmental impact statement that looks at a range of possibilities. It's the preferred when you want to look at, and we will tell you what the preferred option is. Uh, but we have to have kind of a no action alternative. It's just the way it's structured. So just want you to be prepared for that because the, I, I've done this before. Grant's done this. The rumors, Brad's done it. The rumors get going. If you hear them, please email me, contact me. I'll do my best to say yay or nay. And because also people hear what other communities are doing. And, um, other communities are doing things that we don't have to do. You know, so, um, that could go in the rumor mill, right? Like I know Sumner has to change their zoning significantly different than we do because of how they're structured, even though we're right next to each other. So there's going to be some things that are going to be happening in Sumner that are not happening here on the hill, but that doesn't stop that rumor mail from flying and contact your city council about this horrendous change that's coming. So that's my public service announcement for the night. If you hear a rumor, contact me. I'll tell you what part of it's true, what part of it's false, or why there's some differentiation between us and Sumner. And there's some significant differentiation between us based on some state changes in state law that are going to have a significantly drastic, more drastic impact on Sumner than they will here on the hill. So, um, that's my public service announcement. It's going to start flying probably as we get closer to the end of next year.
How about for the good of the order?
Uh, for the good of order, I only have a couple of things. One, I want to personally thank
Correspondent?
Oh, correspondent, sorry. That you.
Oh, um.
We getting any letters?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I forget what it was about. West Taps Highway.
Options on this. And so we sent in
We're doing some traffic studies up there right now. Yeah, yeah. Could you email that, that Doug's response in the email we got out to the planning commissioners?
Sorry. Is it West Taps Highway and Church Lake Road?
Yeah. The T intersection? Yeah.
Where we have a lot of near misses. I love that.
It's, well, it's Kelly Lake Road where Church Lake comes, it's Kelly Lake, Church Lake. They kind of blend together.
Together. They, they come in and they all of a sudden become, it's weird because you come off Sumner Buckley onto Kelly Lake Road and you go right and that's still Kelly Lake to two fourteen. But at that intersection, if you turn left, it's Church Lake Road.
It's, but I believe it's, I could be wrong Kennedy, but I believe it's that T that we've had comments before. We're actually doing an intersection control analysis. Um, and really the big issue is sight law, is sight distance. Not so much control. So I think the initial analysis is coming out with doing some things about how to improve sight distance versus putting up traffic control devices.
I will say as a resident of that road, just a three-way stop sign would cure all of it. Because honestly, when you're sitting at that intersection, I'll, I'll tell you, come out of Taps Highway.
Yeah.
And you look to the left, you cannot see over that knoll.
That, that's a sight distance issue and there's ways you can fix the sight distance without the stop sign. The stop sign doesn't fix the sight.
It just makes everybody stop and then they don't fly fifty miles an hour down our road. That's
I, you'll love this. I think we're looking, the long-term, I think the long-term strategy there is a roundabout.
In that intersection? Okay.
Long-term. But I think initially it's just doing some worth working on it right now.
You know, in the, the comprehensive planner, one of the plans that I've seen is there was talk of a stoplight going in there.
Yeah.
And I don't think that will make it any better than just the three-way stop signs would. So it was like, okay, roundabout, that could work maybe. But people fly down that road.
Yeah.
So bad.
Roundabouts will, that's roundabouts will lock.
I'm, I'm right directly on the road. My house sits on that corner on the road and I'm, oh my God.
Roundabout would solve that more than a stop sign would. Uh, because you wouldn't have people trying to run through the red or the yellow. Um, sorry, staff comments. I personally want to thank my entire planning staff and code enforcement staff and the planning commission for going out to Toons at Taps while I was off delivering my son to college. I don't know how to express my gratefulness for everyone volunteering their time to do that while I was not doing it. It was very weird not to be part of it. But I'm very grateful to Kennedy, Mehdi, Shaley. The entire planning commission for coming out and manning those booths. Uh, I think that's the best public comment engagement we've probably ever had. Um, and so I just want to thank, personally thank, we would hope to be there at Toons or Taps. There was some technical issues on some doors. Not my staff's fault. We're figuring that out, but I just wanted to say thank you for all of that personally.
Kennedy was pretty much the ringmaster on that, but she had to bring her whip.
Kennedy was running it. Kennedy, Mehdi and Shaley, they had it all locked down. I was like, I can go on.
Yeah, it was good.
I can go on vacation. Yes, ma'am.
I would also like to thank all of you guys for your help. It was awesome. And especially since I had the broken wing, it was really helpful that you guys were doing all of the lifting and stuff for me.
Uh, and then just kind of, as I had mentioned earlier on the comp plan update. Uh, one of our prime consultants is having to drop out because of some staffing, uh, issues at their, at their side. Um, which is kind of impacting our ability to deliver. Uh, so give us a, a little bit of time so we can kind of regroup. And I'm working feverishly, trying to come up with a game plan. I hope to have that game plan to present to staff tomorrow, um, or, or Friday. And then we'll be able to kind of give you guys a much better calendar when we expect things to come forward.
You have other comments?
No other comments.
I missed your comment.
Oh, Grant, I do have one more. I do apologize.
Do it.
Only because this, I know this is going to come up. Someone wants to know when we're moving. Talked to Ryan today. The camera just got ordered.
Us?
It took forever for the contractor to get us a quote so we could say, yes, order that camera. It just got done. They're expecting it to come in in mid-October. So I told Kennedy, I don't know if we try to do the, do it in the holiday season or start fresh in January. So it'll either be probably December. Maybe we'll do it on December fifth and have our first planning commission meeting out there because it's always the one that Grant wants to do the party at. So maybe we'll, we'll, we'll do it that way. But you are moving, you are moving and I apologize that it's taking so long. But we have the bikes, we have the recording software. The only thing is we don't have the camera. We got the camera coming. We even figured out how to set up the room. So.
E, either way, it's almost equal distance to go. So.
For us, we're wanting it bad. Trust, we want it more than anybody because then we just have to walk downstairs again. We don't have to get in our cars and drive all the way across town. I said, so five minutes before the meeting, you were, whenever we're in this building, I usually arrive at the meeting at five fifty-seven and I would just run from downstairs. I had to gauge traffic. So I just knew that would come up. That was my last one. I apologize.
Mission or comment?
I only got to actually get one booth, but it went really well. I loved getting to engage with the community and talking with them and getting their feedback. You're just telling them, hey, we want you guys to be involved. And that was a lot of those people were like, what? Really? Like, that's awesome. I think that was a huge, huge thing for our community to feel like they were part of what the city's doing, not just back burner, but you know, the
Was there any conversations out there that were not parks related that you guys had? And the reason I ask is I didn't know if Grant wanted me to schedule at our next meeting kind of time for as a debrief for the planning commission, just to talk about the things they heard that aren't parks related because we're going to bring those forward. But I know this conversation is kind of spilling to all topics. I didn't know if that would be something of value to the planning.
It would be. Yeah.
The only things I ever had anybody bring up besides the parks was water sewer. Outside of that, I didn't have anybody really.
I'm just asking. I mean, I had one guy on the Fennel Creek Trail that went on and on.
The only thing I heard was the actual, the three-way, the three, the T intersection. That was the only random comment I heard. Otherwise it was mostly the parks, which I, you guys did a great job setting it up and having new boards each week. Like I think that was killer because they could like dirt clean every week. I thought that was really smart. So good job. It was great.
And that was all Kennedy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kennedy was the master of the board, so I'm, you know.
Yeah, that was super smart. I really liked that. That was, it was really nice to like be able to just give them stuff to like make their comments. I felt like it was really empowering for people to have like that sounding board and not just like telling us and being like, I was just going to go nowhere, but to actually have something physical they could write on, that was great.
Be able to do it each week differently so that everybody didn't feel like, oh, I'm just, you know, oh, it doesn't matter. It's already up there. They still got to feel like they were part of what was happening. So yeah, it was really neat.
There were some people who came and let me go with this, they just stayed at the same booth, same board. They loved it.
Well, I heard some people were like, I didn't know that existed.
Yeah, I heard that a lot. People were like, I didn't know that was there. Oh, wait, we have, we have a park there?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
One gal that said, that's a good idea, put it on the board. And she goes, ow, I said, write on it. She goes, write on it? Will I get arrested for vandalism? I can see it in her eyes.
I'd go over and like write on it myself a couple of times.
Just like I am right now.
I think it was a big part for the city to connect citizens by doing that. A more beneficial than any of the other booths that we've ever seen.
One thing I think we need to do in that next one is a lot of the times we could, people would come up with some ideas, good, bad, indifferent. But you tell them, well, present this to the city council. You can get three minutes to stand there and, and make your case. And then if they want to go further, they can, and most of them would
Wouldn't go.
Wouldn't go, or they would settle off. But if we had something we could give them, to give them like the commission or the city council meeting times and dates and say, here, you know, slot yourself in and, and show up.
Or we just print out a form that says, here, this is what you want to tell the city council.
Yeah, or if we wanted to say, here's, here we've got some slots, where can I put you in? You know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, we'll figure, yeah, we can do something.
It's going to get. Great job, everybody. It's a good summer.
Uh, on the question of permits and inspections, which we kind of let go, I had a interesting talk with the Timber Ridge people. They're hoping to move and heard stories about this, that and the other thing. So there's some stuff out there that was complaining about and I was not able to get to Keter. Seems to be some reasons for it.
Yeah, I know we're working on a presentation right now. Council's wanting to look at the permit process too. And Ryan or Ty are trying to figure it out. Maybe what I can propose to him is that that's what we do at the joint meeting. So that we do one presentation on the permit process in January. So both the planning commission and city council can kind of see it together. We can have those conversations about what they've heard, what you've heard. We can do that kind of, we always struggle with what to do with that. I think that might be a good, I might propose that to Ryan as a good topic for that meeting. Uh, since the planning commission's also interested in it, that that could be the, what draws that.
Always what can the planning commission bring forward to the council?
Yeah.
This would be a good one. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Who seconded discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thank you very much. Yeah. We'll see you in October.
No, actually you won't.
That's right, you're going to be gone, right?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure the first two weeks in October were.
Where are you going to?
Just outside of Tucson.
I bet you had a break of the week.
Resort down there.
I just, I, I do what all, like all the people say, I just put work.
Okay.
Did like.
Have a good night, everybody.